Will it be at Winter Games?
So will it be fall?
Usually, we go to at least one halftime show at our home school. And then usually about every Saturday, there's about seven throughout the year that we compete at.
So we can assume you guys could dance here too?
Yep.
Okay.
We're gonna do a halftime run here.
And so you travel to other schools for tournaments? We'll call them tournaments.
Yeah.
Dance tournament, right?
Competition.
Competitions? Okay. Um, kind of in the local area or where else would you go? What are some of the places?
Um, we've gone to like Plainview, Go Hugh, a bit more central, uh, Hayfield, kind of stuff around here.
Yeah.
So I read how you funded it with the, um, concession stand?
Yep.
And the, when you have the competition at your school?
Yep, we use a lot of that funds to pay for going to competitions.
What would Leroy's commitment to that be?
In as far as funding?
It wouldn't necessarily be a commitment. We just, wherever the home competition is at, that's whoever has the concessions.
Okay.
So if it was at Leroy, then that funding would go towards it.
Okay.
There's a minor fee when you become a co-op. Ladies can talk more about it than I can. It's Minnesota State High School League.
Okay.
But it's so minor in the grand scheme.
Okay.
I was gonna say 200 bucks maybe? Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. With the home competition, are you guys between Southland, Leroy, Grand Meadow, kind of doing like a rotation every year?
I'll speak to that a little bit. Um, a lot does go into, um, the home competition. We have to basically shut down the building, um, from 3:15, uh, to let teams come in and change and warmups and everything. So, um, you know, it's, it's possible that we could, we could, uh, look at doing one in each school. Um, I think that would take some planning and each school's part, um, to, to add that. I would not want to do more than one home competition a year.
Right, yeah.
That's a lot of, they said, a lot of work. Um, and so if it was something where, you know, Leroy had a home competition, I think that would be on a rotating basis.
Yep, that's what you wanted, you know, Southland one year, Grand Meadow one year, Leroy the next and kind of do it so everyone gets a chance.
Yep.
When you go to the competitions, is it, do the parents provide transportation for their own children or?
No, usually we take either a van or a bus depending on the size of our team.
Yeah, the school, the end of the school. Okay.
I'm sure that would be me.
Darn it. So what else?
Any other questions?
This is a great school project, a senior project, you know? You get to publicly speak, you have to prepare. This is really great. And a pretty impactful project too for our schools. I like the tight line stuff you're doing too. Nice.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, you can have a seat and they're gonna talk about it.
Okay, uh, any discussion on that project? Sounds worthy to me.
Has anybody put any feelers out in the school? Is there interest?
You know, I'm gonna defer to Sean on the question.
Uh, yes, we did. Sarah came over and she met with, with me. We went her out and put up, nobody signed up at this time.
We also put it out really late.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we put it out really late though too because it's like a last minute thing that when she approached on that. So, but I, I do think there would be interest. Uh, we would definitely, uh, if approved, we would give a role on that as well.
Does it start with seventh grade or ninth grade?
Seventh grade.
Huh?
Seventh.
Seventh grade, okay.
Did you, did you say when the season starts?
Usually about mid-summer.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Would someone like to make a motion to either approve or not approve?
I make a motion to approve the establishment of a cooperative dance team with Southland.
Okay, thank you. And Grand Meadow would be included as well?
If.
We don't.
Yep. Ah, okay, okay, okay. Okay. Um, very good, thanks Deb. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Deb, thanks Deb. Um, is there any other discussion? Any questions? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good.
All right.
Good jobs. Very good. You guys can handle it.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, um, we need to have some discussion on the budget for the upcoming year. Sarah, are you ready for that?
Yep, I'll do this relatively briefly, but also give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have as we go through this. First of all, I want to walk through, um, the 2021, uh, general fund balance projections. So this is on page three of the budget document that I provided to you. Um, I always like to start out with where we're thinking the fund balance is going to end up for the current year. Just so you have an idea of where we're projecting current fund balance is going to end up. I think it's real important for you to have an idea of where your starting point is for any budget. Um, and so the ending point for 2021 is your beginning point for 2022. So just to explain why those pages are in the budget. Um, you'll, I do want to note that on the bottom part of page three, you'll note that there are several of the fund balances that are showing up with a zero. And we've talked about that before, how there's different, um, assigned fund balances that for whatever reason were set up in the, um, general fund that are now going to be moved to the, uh, student activity accounts, um, where they should be. And so this is just a reflection of the fact that those, um, assigned fund balances are going to be zeroed out and that's going to happen. Um, and we're not going to need to worry about them in 2022. All right, so as we dive into the general fund, the first thing that, um, if we're always looking at really during the year is average daily membership. Because so much of our revenue, uh, specifically our general education aid and a good part of the levy, uh, is driven by our enrollment numbers. Um, and you can see on page five, it gives you some historical information from 18, 19, and 20, um, on those enrollment numbers. Gives you the, uh, the most recent projection that we have for 2021 and then what we're projecting for 2022. As you can see, um, we're projecting the 2022, uh, uh, enrollment to be at 265.71. Uh, just slightly lower than what we're projecting the 2021 enrollment to end up at. Um, so not much fluctuation there. Um, good news, uh, we, I've, I've been in districts where that has been at just a, you know, terrible, terrible decline and you don't want to be in that situation. So this is good news. You know, if we can keep it flat or slightly, um, climbing, that's exactly where you want to be. As always, the, the enrollment is something that we'll monitor as the year goes on. And especially at the very onset of the year because until we see those kiddos in their seats, um, we don't know exactly what the year is going to bring. So that first month of the year is really critical, um, to get an idea of what the year is going to bring. Um, as always, the enrollment numbers are calculated based on a five-year average retention model. And I don't know if you want me to get into the weeds on that or not. I'm happy to, I'm happy to talk through enrollment projection models with any of you, um, at any time. So if you've ever, ever have any questions on how we come up with these, um, enrollment numbers, give me a call. Happy to talk through it with you. So when we start looking at the general fund revenue, in total, the, uh, general fund revenue, this is reserved and unreserved, both combined, um, is projected to be up about 8.33% to just over $4.3 million. Um, the levy revenue is projec, is reflecting the revenue that, um, is associated with the levy that you all certified back in December of last year. Um, we assumed a 0% increase in the general education aid formula as, as I was directed to do. Just as a side note, um, a 1% increase on the general education aid formula is about a $20,000 increase in revenue. So it's not a huge bump in revenue if, if the legislature comes through for us, but it's, it's something to keep in mind. Um, and other fluctuations in the revenue will be discussed in a future slide. General fund expenditures increased by about 2% to a total of just over $4 million. Uh, the salary and benefits, uh, increased reflecting the MSEA contract settlement that is in place, um, as well as the most recent offer to the LOEA, uh, as that negotiation process is in, um, in the works. Uh, utilities reflected 10% increase over historical amounts. Uh, instructional supplies and materials are based on a per pupil amount. So that again is another place that is driven by those enrollment numbers. Um, you'll see here that there are reductions in services and supplies and much of that is because there isn't, um, anything budgeted or not much budgeted for capital and LTFM dollars, um, because I didn't want to be presumptuous, um, and put anything in there. I know that there are some items on the agenda to be approved tonight and we can always do a budget adjustment to put those in after the fact. Um, but until that happens officially, I did not include them. Okay? And then other fluctuations will be in a future slide here. And actually on page 23 of the, of the budget document that I put together is where I, um, put in all of those fluctuations for the unreserved portion of the general fund. You can see that within general education aid, there was about a $50,000 reduction there and much of that is related to compensatory aid going down. Um, and that's something that we knew was going to happen for whatever reason. We have less folks filling out the free reduced lunch application and that, uh, results in less revenue for the district. Um, we had about a $26,000 decrease in special education aid. Um, and that, uh, just as a side note, um, is, is down again for the, for the next year. Um, property tax revenue is down about $82,000, um, for the eight, for the unreserved portion of that. Um, and much of that is cleaning up enrollment, uh, fluctuations. What happens with levy numbers are there's, we, we put in enrollment information and if that enrollment information isn't real accurate, eventually the levy system catches it, catches us up and there's adjustments that are gone, um, that go through and, and eventually the district gets what it's supposed to get. Um, and so there's some of those sorts of, um, adjustments that are going through. Um, there's about $48,000 because Leroy is no longer sharing a social studies teacher. That was some local revenue that, um, Leroy was receiving in, in prior years. That is no longer happening. Um, there was a reduction in incentive aid. There was some local COVID aid that is no longer happening. But then on the flip side, we're going to be receiving about $638,000 in additional SR1, or excuse me, SR2 and SR3, uh, federal dollars, uh, which is great news. Helps us keep our, our budget balanced this year, but it's something that is one-time funding. And so we cannot depend on that to be there in future years. And so we're going to have to be real careful about future budgets. That's going to be something that we're going to need to talk about, uh, at length in future meetings and as this year progresses. On the expenditure side of things, um, included is $56,000 for a student services position, which Jen has talked about at different times. Um, about $48,000 for a STEM position, um, and that's the salary and benefits above and beyond, uh, the, the, the costs of the overloads that that position would, uh, absorb. Um, there's about $151,000 in increased salary benefits, again because of, um, contract settlements that I've mentioned. Um, there's a reduction of about $54,000, uh, for salary and benefits because of different staffing changes that have happened. Uh, so that helps offset that student services position, um, which is what we've talked about during the, the course of bringing that position into play. Um, there's historically been a $40,000 budget in the maintenance department for just general, um, repairs. Uh, and instead of paying for that out of the undesignedated, unreserved portion of the budget, it makes more sense to pay for that out of the LTFM portion of the budget, um, because that money is there to pay for that sort of thing. Um, and so we've changed that in the budget, um, so that we can pay for those, those repairs that are needed, but use a, a funding source that makes more sense. Um, and then a $19,000 reduction because there were some, um, payroll tax penalties that happened last year that will not be there in the upcoming year. Okay? As I mentioned, with, with regards to operating capital, I didn't want to be presumptuous and put, um, items into the operating capital budget until the board took actual action. You know, with the discussions that are happening with the buildings, the grounds committee and, and things. But I think it's very important for the board and the community to understand what amount of dollars are there and available through operating capital, um, to spend on those types of, um, projects. So this is listed on page 12 of your budget document. Um, and between the aid levy and the funds that are carried over from the previous year, you can see that there's about $130,000 available within the capital, um, area to spend on, on purchases of new items. One, one distinction that you need to keep in mind is that capital dollars can be used for the purchase of new items. LTFM can be used for the repair of existing items. However, you can't use capital dollars to repair existing items.
What about replacement?
Replacement, yes. Repair, no. Okay? So you, you have to be very careful and, and very strategic about planning on, you know, how you're going to use those dollars. Okay? Just some info for you. Similarly, um, here's the LTFM. On page 13, this information is listed, so you don't need to try to write it down. Um, I had mentioned that there's about $48,000 that had been budgeted in the undesignedated and reserved that we said, no, makes more sense to budget it out of LTFM to pay for those just general repairs that happened during the course of the year. So that's included here. Outside of that and, and above and beyond that, there's, there's still $231,000 of LTFM funds that are available to pay for whatever projects are identified for this upcoming year through the, the work of this committee and whatever is identified and, and prioritized. Um, so just an FYI, so you, that you know what kind of money you're working with. Okay? So after that is all said and done, page 21 lists your projected fund balances at the end of 22. Um, you can see that the undesigned, uh, excuse me, undesignedated, unreserved fund balance ends up at about 44.49%. So well within the board, um, specified fund balance reserve limit. So that's great. You can see that the reserve impact on that very first line is 182, about $183,000 to the good. So we've got a budget that is balanced and then some, okay? We've got a surplus. But as I said, a good portion of that is related to those SR2 and SR3 revenues that are one-time revenue. Okay? And so going forward, we, we can't plan on that being there in the future. So we're, we're going to have to be, starting to have some difficult conversations in this upcoming year to prioritize where we want to be spending our dollars. Because, um, we're going to have to be maybe looking at spending down some of the reserves to bring it down closer to that, um, board-approved limit. Um, and then planning for the future to make sure that we've got a, a vision forward so that we know, um, where we're, we're headed and the future numbers. We're putting the district in a good, um, financial place now and in the future. Any questions on the general fund before I keep moving? Okay? For each of the next funds, I just took a snippet of the, the page from the, um, of the budget document for the corresponding fund and made a couple of notes just to touch on a couple of highlights. So Fund 2, um, you'll see that the federal aid revenue budget is down for 2022 and that is because we caught up, um, in 2021 for those claims that never happened in 2020. So we would expect then in 2022 for, for that revenue to kind of return to a more quote-unquote "normal" level. Okay? Um, the food budget is down and that's based on historical expenses. Um, Jen and I kind of talked back and forth on what do we do? What do we, you know, where do we put it? We don't want it to be too low. We don't want it to be too high and, and make it look like it's, it's not realistic. And so here's where we settled. We're gonna be keeping an eye on that number and, and making sure that it's, it is realistic. Um, in general, you'll see that the fund balance, uh, percentage down at the bottom of the screen that we're projecting of 32.38% is much better than the 11.7% that we ended back in 2020. After we went through the work of getting those claims made and caught up on and, um, things cleaned up there. So much better there. Um, still always work to, to do to make sure that that is managed appropriately, but, um, definitely an improvement there. In Fund 4, we're projecting a decrease in both revenues and the expenditures. Um, you will note that there's a fairly large fund balance in, in Fund 4 in total and much of this is in school readiness and ECFE. And I would caution that the legislature in previous years, um, has done what they've called an unallotment. Anyone here ever heard of that? They've, they've come into districts and they've said, oh, you've got, you know, this huge fund balance in Fund 4. You don't need it. We're going to unallot it and we're gonna come in and we're gonna just take it. So we don't want to be in that situation. While it's good to have a healthy fund balance, we don't want to be in a situation where the fund balance is so large that it would look, um, tempting for the legislature to come in and, and say, you know what? You're, you're holding onto too much money. We're gonna come in and take some of it away. So that's something that Jen and I have talked about as well, um, and will be looking at in the future.
Yes, you know, hopefully they'll take into account that with COVID, a lot of the ECFE activities could not be held.
Yes.
So hopefully they'll take that into account.
I would hope so.
Yes.
I would hope so.
I would hope so.
Yes.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's the whole reason that that's, they, they're, they couldn't have those classes.
Right, with COVID. So, you know, hopefully they'll give us a leeway of a year. I would hope so. I would hope so. It's just something to keep an eye on because I have seen it and it's, it was not. Yes. Well, and it, it is so counterintuitive because as a, as a, you know, conservative financial person, I always want to have the fund balance looking decent and, you know? And then all of a sudden the state comes in and says, oh, we're gonna take it away from you. Hmm. You know, it's, it's frustrating. So I, I don't, I would hate to see that happen. Right. We just need to be aware of it. Right. And make sure that we're doing what. At least we can't just spend it, you know, on good programming. Right. Okay? All right. Fund 11 is the pool. That's on page 16 of your documents. So 2020 was the first year that the school was on the district books. Okay? So that's fun. We get to see what the bottom line was for the first time. Um, so you can see on that first column, the 2020 actual, um, the profit, if you will, for the year was about $29,000 for the year. So that's good. We're operating at a surplus. In 2021, we're planning to end the year with a fund balance of just under $48,000. So that's good. We're growing that fund balance based on, um, you know, we've got that levy coming in for general, general operations and we're not spending as much as that amount is, which is good. So we're growing a fund balance to be able to pay for future needs, um, which you're all going to be talking about here tonight. Okay? Um, in 2022, that budget, I have conservatively, conservatively budgeted the local revenues at $16,000, um, just because it seems that those revenues kind of bump around a little bit. Um, and so we can always adjust that up, um, once we're more, um, sure of what that revenue is going to be. That's an easy budget adjustment, but I wanted to be conservative there. Um, and then the 2022 expenditures include, include a repair budget of $20,000, um, to help pay for the needed repair. So, um, that being said, I, help me Jen, what's the total amount on the repairs that are, are needed for the pool?
Oh, probably about 40 now.
Okay. So let's say that is 40, $40,000. We've got $20,000 built in. The remaining $20,000 can come off of the, the pool fund balance. Okay? So we've got $20,000 of it built into the, the budget already to put it in this kind of black and white. That make sense? Okay? Any questions on the pool fund? Okay? OPEB Trust is Fund 45, page 17. Um, OPEB Trust was established back when the district issued bonds, um, to help pay for OPEB. OPEB is other post-employment benefits. Generally speaking, the district uses the OPEB trust dollars to pay for implicit trust subsidies and I'll explain that in a minute. And then, um, retirement benefits of typically teachers, um, when they retire and they've got dollars that go into their, um, Viva account. Okay? Implicit rates subsidy dollars are, um, the, if you think about it like this, we pay medical insurance premiums for, for employees and the thought is, by the actuaries of the world, the thought is, is that those medical insurance premiums cost more because we have retirees on our plan. And because we have retirees on our plan and they, and our overall premiums that cost more, we should be allowed to pay for a portion of our health insurance premiums out of these OPEB dollars rather than having to pay for it with our general fund dollars. Okay? So at the end of the year, when we have our actuary study, where the actuaries come in and they do all of their fund math stuff and tell us what that magic number is, then we're able to code that amount of health insurance benefit cost to the OPEB trust rather than general fund. And actually Fund 2 and Fund 4 because there's operating stuff going on there too, but, um, so that's kind of, it's in a nutshell. Okay? Yep?
I have to, I have to go back a minute to the pool one.
Yep.
Okay. If we did a big repair on, or a replacement on something at the pool, is that coming out of LTFM? Or is that coming out of the pool?
It could come out of either.
Okay.
Yep, it could come out of either. If, if it comes out of the pool, you know, and, and it exceeds the amount that you have available in the pool fund, um, I would have to verify. I'm guessing that this fund cannot go into a deficit.
Right, okay.
I might have to verify to be absolutely sure. Um, but in, in a, I'm guessing that you could only spend up to what you had available in that fund and then the remainder could come out of LTFM.
Okay.
Yep. But I would recommend spending it out of the pool fund first, you know? And, and showing, um, and matching those revenues for the pool against the expenditures for the pool first. Okay? Yep. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on OPEB Trust? All right. So then the flip side of that is Fund 47, the OPEB debt. So when we issued the bonds, okay, we got all this money, you know, like we'll, we'll just say 700,000. We got this big, big bunch of money. That created the trust. That went into Fund 45. But then of course you have to pay it back because no one just gives you $700,000 for fun, right? So the $700,000 worth of debt, that. So the $700,000 worth of debt then goes into Fund Forty-Seven, and then we slowly, over time, pay that back, and we levy for that over time, okay? You will notice that the revenue this year is down because there... We talked about it at levy certification time. There's a fund balance adjustment going through on the level of Fund Forty-Seven. We talked about how with our debt service, we're required to levy 105% of our principal and interest payments, and then over time, what that's going to do is grow your fund balance, and then it reaches that magical point where the MDE says, "Nope, you're too high now," and then they take it away. And then you levy up to that point again, and then they take it away. So we're in one of those years where they're taking it away from us, and they more or less force you to use that 5% that you've been over-leveying over the course of time to pay for some of your debt payment, okay? So there is that change going on this year. Otherwise, the expenditures going out of Fund Forty-Seven are just tied to your debt agreements. Nothing too exciting going on there. Fund Twenty-One is student activities. And student activities is something that gets confused oftentimes, because there's Fund Twenty-One student activities, which are those accounts that are set up for the kids and account for the dollars that are raised by the kids, and the kids therefore have control over how those dollars are spent, okay? It's money raised by the kids for the kids for the kids to spend however they want. That's not to be confused with other types of things that look and kind of feel like student activities, like your, let's say, a basketball coach or a softball coach or something like that. That's part of your general fund, okay? That's different. This is student activities. This is just money that kids raise for those extras, that they choose to do, okay? So this is a reflection of that. Because student activities are not allowed to go into a deficit, I typically set them up with a budget that is equal. So you can see, it's got a total revenue budget of $33,000 and total expenditure budget of $33,000, just to set up a budget. We're required to set up a budget. It has to have a budget. Just like the general fund, this has to have a budget as of June 30th. But when... The truth of the matter is, is that budget could change on a daily basis, because what they have available to spend is whatever they had left over from last year plus whatever they raised minus what they spent this year, and that can change all the time, okay? So this is just to kind of get them up and rolling and to meet that statutory requirement to have a budget set, okay? Any questions on student activities? Fund Eight, the scholarship fund. This is one that I... It's very much just based on what has been set up in previous years. If I am given different information from the scholarship committee, I will happily adjust this budget to whatever they say. It's a revenue budget equal to the expenditure budget with a little bit of interest built in there. I have no idea if $100,000 is an accurate amount for... To estimate for donations in previous years, it has been. Last year, not quite as much, because last year was a different year. And so I would welcome anyone who's on the scholarship committee to feed me any information that they would like. But again, this is more or less just to set up a budget to meet that statutory requirement, and we can adjust it to whatever it should be in the future.
LTFM.
Yep.
You had mentioned there was like $231,000, something like that available.
Yep.
How was that... How's that arrived at? Let me try to ask. So is there a plan that would have been set up a year ago that these are the projects you were going to do and that amount of $231,000? Or is that a percentage of our general fund revenue? How was that arrived at?
You're combining a couple of things. You're thinking of the 10-year plan, okay? And the 10-year plan uses some of those ideas as far as, you know, the 10-year plan requires us to put together the 10-year revenue plan and the 10-year expenditure plan, and then put together an idea of what different projects are going to be done. In this particular district, there hasn't been a specific list of projects tied to that plan. I would recommend that we work towards that, and I think we are. As far as where these dollar amounts are coming from, the anticipated aid revenue is simply a dollar amount that comes off of a revenue projection model that the Department of Education puts out. They've got a revenue projection model that they use for... Trying to think of the other aids. This and literacy incentive aid and, you know, and it would be tied to the number of students and that type of thing. The anticipated levy revenue, that's going to be straight off of the levy that the board approved and certified last December, okay? So this is truly what our revenue is going to be, based on those documents, okay? And when we do the 10-year plan, those numbers, the revenue numbers, should tie pretty darn close to this. Outside of there being some fluctuation in the number of kiddos, you know, the number of the student counts that were used at the time of that 92,000, 693 being calculated, compared to the number of students being used in the 10-year plan revenue projection.
So the levy revenue was part of the levy that was set last fall, and the levy to the max, that's part of the LTFM.
Yes. Exactly. That would have been part of the 20, Page Twenty-One levy, which is for revenue for fiscal year 2022.
So it's not like we can take these projects, what we're talking about tonight. I mean, we can use those dollars to pay for those, right?
Yes.
But it's not like we're going to raise more dollars because we've approved this.
No, no. No. We're not increasing taxes.
That's part of your 10... That's part of your 10-year...
Right. The only way that these projects would raise additional revenue is if they are one of the few special finance codes that you are allowed to levy additional dollars for, such as indoor qualities. If there's a project that is over $100,000 at a particular site, then you're able to levy additional dollars, okay? So there's just a handful of those specific types of projects, if they're over $100,000, that you're able to levy additional...
Like the health and safety...
Yes. Exactly. Yep. And that's laid out in statute. Yep? Yep? Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep. Any other questions? Good job, Sarah.
Any... No more questions? If not, we need a motion to approve the budget for the upcoming year.
I'll make the motion to approve the 21/20-year... Sorry, excuse me. 21/22 budget.
Okay. Ms. Teresa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ben. Any other discussion or questions before we vote? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Very good. Okay. Moving on to some more policy review this month. We have a second reading of Policy 208, 209, 210, 211, and the volunteer policy packet, right? Okay. Any questions or anything the policy committee has to add to that?
We didn't have any changes for anything under the second reading.
Okay. If not, we need a motion to approve the second reading of those policies.
I'll make the motion to approve 208, 209, 210, 211, and the volunteer policy packet.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Now, we would have the first reading of Policy Number 212, 213, 214, 301, 302, 303, 304, 305, and 306. Anything the policy committee wants to do that?
Under 213, there was only four committees listed. We opted to actually change that and list all of the board committees. Otherwise, we didn't have any other changes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of those policies?
I'll make the motion to approve 212, 213, 214, 301, 302, 303, 304, 305, and 306.
Okay. Ms. Teresa, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tim. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried. Now, we get to rescind the COVID-19, I assume, not COVID-10, face covering policies. We don't have to deal with that anymore. Is there a motion to rescind that policy?
I'll make the motion to rescind, excuse me, rescind Policy 808, the COVID-19 face covering policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tim. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carried as well. Very good. Okay. Now, before we go on our little building tour, I happen to notice our state representative... Ah, there she is. Patricia Mueller was here, and so come on up here and give us a... Give us an update of what's going on at the Capitol.
So I heard you. I heard you as you were sending out your pleas.
Thank you very much.
Which is fantastic to hear. So good to be with you guys in person. I know the last time I was with you, we were on Zoom, I believe, and I know at that point I had been far too long since I had gotten a chance. Now that I'm done with session, done with session, and I've been trying to make it to all of the city council and school board meetings in person during the summer, and it was either you or Adams, which I have been to several times. So you guys went up.
That's the choice.
Of course it is the best choice. So it was... It's fantastic to be with you guys in person, and I'm just so thrilled. That review you just did was amazing. So thorough. You guys got to keep her. That's awesome. So let me just kind of explain where we're at. With me being in the minority party, there's very little information that I'm getting about where conference committees are ending up. I hear a lot of the things with the E-12 budget that you guys do when it comes to press conferences. And so the last press conference I heard was from the Senate, and the House had offered to do a 2%, 2% rate on the budget raise on the general fund, on your... For you, ADM. I'm sorry. Look, I know what I'm trying to say, but it's not coming out. And the Senate had countered with a 3%, 1 and 1/2, and so it would be a little bit more extra funding for you in the... Right at the beginning, as you're recovering from COVID, and then kind of scaling back in the tails in the second year of the pandemic. And so that would be something that we're going to have to debate and what we're kind of, what we're looking at. I have voted for a 2%, 2% in the past, but I have also been, and you guys have known this from me, I've also been very adamant about making sure that you guys have as much local control as possible for that money, and also that you have... That you're able to protect your teachers in some of the things that, policy-wise, that have been implemented by the majority party for the House bill. Now, I have not seen a copy of the E-12 bill yet. I believe that's one of the last ones that will come to us because of some of the contentious stuff that has been in it, including the social studies standards, including some of the other curriculum, some different curriculum requirements. And so that's something that I know that is still being negotiated. What has been troubling for me is that many of these negotiations are happening just between the chairs, so not even the working committees are being on there. And for example, Senator Doran, our Senator Wright, was on the conference committee for education, and he, from what I understand, once he's turned into working groups at the end of the session, he has not been able to be a part of those discussions, because it's simply been between the chairs. That does not provide a lot of transparency for you, and so that's something that as a minority party, when they come to, when they come to the floor, we'll make sure to give the full vetting of that as much as possible. When we reached budget targets at the end of the, at the end of the session, we did not... The media said that we had a budget agreement. That's not exactly true. We ended up actually having just targets, and then with that were some other stipulations. One of that was that from the ARPA money, we are getting, for the American Rescue Plan, we are getting... Minnesota is getting about $3 billion from that, and Mauer County by itself is getting $7 million, two installments of $3.5 million. I've been in contact with Trish Aaron from the county to kind of see how that's being dippy'd up, and I was told, and I'm trying to get all of my things, making sure that I'm giving you all the information, is that they are going to have a meeting about that money. I believe they're having... Oh, where is that? They are going to have a meeting about that money soon, I believe. And I can't... I can't... I think it's in July soon that they're going to... July... For some reason, July 14th is coming in my brain, and I can't... Don't hold me to that. I can get back to you, because I simply can't find this information here. But, and so some of the, some of that money, I know, is going to be allocated to microgrants for businesses again, but they also want to, just as you have been talking about, this is one-time money. We don't want necessarily this to start coming into the base of our budgets, just like your wise treasurer here has been talking about with that S money. And so they're looking at how we can actually use something that's going to have a long-term change. I know one of that is broadband. I know that's something that they have been looking at, and so I will make sure that you can get the information for that, so if you want to be a part of those meetings. The final thing that I wanted to talk to you about is that one of the deals that they had with the governor is that from that $3 billion, $500 million of that is going to be what the governor can spend on without any legislator approval. Not something I'm super crazy about, but something that they believed was something that they needed to give the governor. So out of his $500 million, $75 million of that is going towards summer, summer school or summer-type of investment. And probably you already know this, but just making sure that Leroy was off, was given about $7,500 for that, and that can be used by August of 24, right? I want to say, or '22?
I think it's '22.
'22, okay. August of '22. I'm getting some of my deadlines, so... And so August of '22, out of that $75 million, only about $36 million of that is going... It was distributed using ADM on a 60/40 percentage, 40% of ADM. 60% is for underrepresented students. And then the rest of that money is broken up from, like, I think about $3 million is for tutors, and about $10 million is for adult-based education, and I think there's about $5 million for childhood education. All of those were grants that you could have applied for, and I'm sure you've been very familiar with what that's, what's happening. And so just making sure that you're able to access that money and that you're... And if you need any help, then I am available for that. Other than that, thank you for your heroic work during COVID. Thank you for all that you guys do. Thank you for all that you guys do. You guys are, I, I love coming out to these schools because with your connections with the community, you guys are truly good examples of how we are supposed to be working together to serve these kids. This summer, I have been working on how we can incentivize apprenticeships, and I did give out an email to the principal of Weber High School and, yes. Sorry, I have, like, so, I can't remember, I can't remember if you were at the meeting on the, on the 17th or not, but it's okay if you, if you weren't, but we are looking at, I had all the, as many as I could from the district, or from the, from the county come together and just talk about what can apprenticeships look like for our students, especially ones that, so many apprenticeships are often maybe under, people are very excited about because when people move on to like post-secondary, you guys lose your funding for those students. And so, I'm trying to figure out how we can emulate a, 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 a project, or a, some sort of project that, that Colorado is doing called Career Wise, where they actually have a relationship with their local community college, with the high schools, with the businesses, and with their Department of Education, where it's more like concurrent enrollment, where you don't lose funding, and that we can somehow incentivize it a little ways for the, for the businesses as well, is a three-year apprentice program for students starting when they're about 16. So, it would be really interesting if that's something that our students, my number one goal, especially as a teacher, has been how can we make education something that's going to be incredibly relevant and applicable for our students, especially as we step into the 21st century, and, and then beyond, right? So, if COVID has taught us anything, is that we need to make sure that we are doing all that we can for our kids, and this is some way that I'm really excited about. I have business cards for you, so if that's something that you want, I can leave them with your chair here, and it has my cell phone number on there, so feel free to contact me at any time. My legislative assistant, Justin Brill, is a brand-new graduate right out of college, and he's a go-getter, and so if you have any questions, he often can find the answers literally within 48 hours. So, if you need anything, I can often get back to you very, very quickly. So, other than that, I'll be around the district as much as I can. I hear Leroy has, do you guys, are you guys doing your festival or something? Is there a Leroy Days or?
Summer Fest.
Summer Fest?
It's happening.
When is that again?
July.
Okay, because I've been trying to get myself embedded in all of the parade, so.
Parade is on Sunday at 2:00.
That's great.
It's a teen.
That's awesome.
Teen or 18er.
I'm really excited about that because I was at the Adams Dairy Day Parade, and the Dairy Day, the Dairy Princess was one of my former students, and so she challenged me to milk a cow, and that was disastrous. So, but exciting. So, anyway, if you have any questions for me before I head out, I was going back up to the Capitol for a special session, so I got a leave for 24 hours, and so I was able to come back to see my husband and visit with you guys, so.
It's, I'm just gonna say, it's Sunday, July 18th at 2 o'clock.
Okay, and so I'll have to contact someone for the.
Sure you come for the fireman's chicken.
Oh, yes. 100%. That weekend, I will basically live in Leroy.
Yeah.
There's good food everywhere. Which is awesome, no, I'm super excited.
Okay, any questions for?
Patty, just one comment. First of all, thank you for being here, but what I'm, I'm seeing kind of a, a really great theme, that more money is going out to the formula and less in new policy language.
That's what I would like.
Thank you.
That's what I would like.
We want that too. You know, the unfunded mandates, the multiple policies.
Yep.
You know, we need money to do that.
And we talked about that when I first voted against the Augustus bill, is that in that Augustus bill, there were 75 new unfunded, unfunded mandates from the majority party in the House, and so that was something that I soundly stood against. And so, I want to make sure that you guys are able to get the money that you need, and also that you're able to use it the way that you, that you need. This, this $75 million, and this is just me talking to you, I'm glad that you get this money, but what I, what we had done as a minority party for this money was that we said, here's $75 million, let's go ahead and just divvy it out via, you know, ADM, and say, hey, go, spend with it however you want, instead of these grants that you have to do all the time, which drive me insane. And so, I really wanted to make sure that you guys were, were well taken care of. I will listen to what you're saying.
Thank you.
And thank you, because that takes, sorry, I keep thinking what is going on here. I, I keep, we hear that a lot, you know, listen, the free and reduced lunch, we've been struggling with eating people to sign up for that after we provided free meals for a year and a half. We're, you know, a lot of things that you weren't able to do, it'd say it looked like, hey, we have a, uh, we have a surplus. Some of that is because it was unused money because you were able to use it from COVID and the restrictions. And so, we're trying to make sure, at least for me, I would like to see for at least one year, that you're able to just kind of have a little bit of flexibility with that and before we're able to kind of jump on.
Right. Thank you. That'd be great.
So I'll leave this with you, and you guys can, and take whichever you want, but as always, thank you.
Thank you.
For all of the work that you guys do.
Thanks for.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now we were going to, we have to like recess or anything? We're gonna take this little tour?
No.
Actually, Dylan can follow along.
He's gonna follow along?
Yes.
Okay. Well, now's the time we were going to do our little facility tour. So, um, we want to, we're gonna discuss the boiler, the sand filter at the pool tonight, the water heater at the pool, and maybe we want to talk about some of the lighting things a little bit, so maybe just tie on those three or four items instead of taking a grand tour of the whole facility, and then we can get back and finish up our meeting. So, uh, let's go ahead and do that. Why don't we go ahead and start at the pool? That's the big, big kicker, isn't it?
Not streaming anymore, she's recording.
I'm gonna mute when you move past the wait room.
So that's the next question. So if we want a water heater in here, huh, how big is it? But we don't want this to run again, because if the water gets too fast, then we can't get out because the sand filter is away. So we need to have some thought. So, I guess when you're back, we can sit down and talk about it. I, you know, that motor is how old? That's been rebuilt a couple times, but it works. And that might be something to think about too, you know? That's been rebuilt like two times in a decade. I don't know about this one. So if we're replacing this, do we give it a new motor at the same time while the system's open? Just more stuff to think about.
How long has it worked?
That's original. Original, yeah. That's original. Yep. Sounds like it was original, and they just, they had some troubles with it, and they rebuilt that one again and said, don't call us again, type thing.
Any idea how much it was worth?
I do not, no. Anybody hot?
Yeah.
I feel like I did. I come here tomorrow too. But keep that open for me. Swann it up.
Everybody worn, a little worn, their suits, we're gonna have a boot light, I think.
That's the boiler, Aaron.
Boiler room. Aaron's gonna lead us. Aaron, as long as you don't get us lost. Thank you. Ah, you're on camera.
Don't mind the bulletin. Uh, yeah, half of them are gone for TC and stuff, so.
Hey, Aaron, don't get us lost between, between, we know where I'm going, but. No, we're not doing that.
Nope, that, that closet just gets in trouble.
You're on camera.
Dylan, you go ahead, because it's the board, so.
In the distance, names of, that's one. Yeah.
Yeah, that was one put in in 96. 66, 66, 6.
And this is the one that went into, what, 16, 17?
That's the newer one. It's probably a big, it's seven. So this is the one that's down and needs a new burner put in it. And that was 125, 25, 18, something like that.
I'm guessing the new ones are way more energy efficient?
I would assume so.
I don't know.
Is the whole thing gonna change, or just a part of it?
Just the part of it.
Just the side?
Just the burner inside.
Okay.
It's 96, right?
Yep. 96, yep.
Yeah, it's not all that.
No.
That one we took out here was put in in, yeah, I was gonna say, I want to say the 50s, I think. It had been in service for a number of years.
Is this the water heater where the pool is getting the hot water now coming from? All the way from here over? Okay.
Yes.
I know, it's creepy. Ow! Well, at least we're on camera, we can yell for help.
He's just recording.
Oh, Dylan!
Jesus! Oh my God! Didn't you know she's got a right book?
I haven't been sitting just lying around.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, next time.
What's back there?
So we wanna go and talk about the LED lights, or?
We can actually look this hallway here, and you can see how that LED is.
Okay. Why don't you go look in the gym of the lifetime you have? That's, that's a new light, that's a new light, so.
That's the new one.
Kind of have a comparison.
Yep.
Don't slip. Don't slip.
Yeah.
I did a visual of the movie Saw and it's happening.
See? You're here late at night and that happens? Bad stuff going on here.
Is that where the ghosts live?
Probably.
I heard stories, I haven't seen anything, but I've heard a lot of stories.
I will not go, that's a, that's the first time in thirteen years that I've been in there.
We're all out, we're all helping for.
So in terms of LED lighting, this is, well, one hallway of Minis with various different forms of the lighting components that we have. We have some lights that are hanging, some that are up in the ceiling, some flat with the ceiling. Um, but these are not LEDs and as soon as you walk into the gym, you will see an enormous difference just in terms of, is it? Yeah, yeah, basically, so, yeah, it's pretty incredible. Uh, when you look in our classrooms, they're not LED right now. Yeah, you can tell, yeah, you can tell. So, is it called lumens?
Pardon?
How bright a bulb is a lumen?
Yep.
So a lumen, and so, we're hoping to get around that two thousand or twenty-two hundred lumens per bulb. We are definitely not there with fluorescent lights, so.
And the LEDs use less energy, they're cooler.
Yeah.
Both have.
And studies show, um, and you can look up any kind of studies that you want to and do your own research, maybe what you want, but, um, educational studies show LED lighting does improve, uh, student achievement. There is an element to it. Because probably they can see. Yeah, they can see.
So let's go to the gym and check out what the, what the lights. Uh, the pool area, just, just highlighting the pool. Maybe an extra few of the hallways.
Okay, so you have how many bulbs are in here?
Four hundred and ten.
Yeah, so how much should we do these?
Here, remember? Thirty. Thirty-two or three thousand some odd dollars and then after the rebates, the final cost was nineteen hundred for the district.
So it's like nine dollars a one?
Yep, yeah, that'd be right, two hundred and ten, ten is nine, yeah, yeah.
But, um, and then, what's their life, like, of a bulb? What's the expected life term of a bulb?
Um, at fifty thousand hours, they'll have seventy percent of their life.
Fifty thousand hours.
Versus, uh, a four. Uh, probably ten, twelve thousand. These probably, maybe, maybe we reach that because they're on so much. Fluorescent, what kills fluorescents is on enough. There's different ratings. A three hour rating, a twelve hour rating. I'm gonna ask, what, the four times as long as a fluorescent? At, at least. Seven more times as long? Yep, at least.
Do those require any warm up time or they're just on?
Instant on.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's old, that's old school, the warm up lights.
And they have a.
Yeah, exactly.
So even though the LED lighting isn't on the agenda tonight, it's something that the committee's talking about and really. So the committee's talking about doing it maybe in, in phases and sections of the building. You know, like, for example, starting with the elementary, do all the elementary, then go to the high school, one of the floors or whatever.
Yeah.
You're just doing, so it doesn't hit you.
Yeah.
You've got a great big bill on one year.
Yeah.
It was really supposed to have. I shouldn't say it that way. It was recommended by the task force, but it would have been accomplished by now. It's just we're starting very early.
It's just five.
It's not like we don't have lights in the building.
Right.
Like the boiler, we won't have heat in the building, so we gotta deal.
Right.
Okay, great tour. Uh. Let's, uh, move on to nine D's. That'd be the discussion and approval of the, uh, the burner for the boiler. So I don't know if anybody remembers seeing the, uh. Uh, quote from L and M Boiler for that. Just definitely have, have that here. So there was two, there, there were two options. Uh, the option that the Building and Grounds Committee recommended is actually the more expensive of the two options, which would mean that it's capable of burning natural gas and, uh, light oil burner or fuel oil. And that, that price is thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars from L and M Boiler. Anybody else, anybody else that's on that committee have anything to add? Otherwise, it's really pretty straightforward. Um, we need, uh, we need to have heat in the building, we're in Minnesota.
What was discussed between the two days?
The other, the other would have just been for natural gas.
Hell.
And that was nearly twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'd rather pay the little extra and have the backup just in case or kids don't freeze.
That's what the committee, uh, thought as well, so.
Do we have fuel oil in the tank?
I believe so.
Yes. How long has it been there?
Good question. Good question.
Do they, do they? Seems like it might be an R I.
Check it once in a while.
Run that once in a while just to make sure everything works.
Seems like it'd be a good idea, but I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I doubt it's being done, but you know, I don't know.
And these dollars for this project will come from where?
They can either come, well, we'll probably have them come out of LTFM. We have quite a nice budget there to do it, so, why not?
Okay. Okay, any other questions about the need for a new burner in the, in that boiler? If not, is there a motion to approve, um, the bid B from L and M Boiler for thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars?
I'll make the motion to accept the bid from L and M Boilers for the, uh, natural gas and fuel oil burner replacement.
Okay, thanks Pat, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Cassidy. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, pretty good. Okay, then the next item for discussion is the sand filter at the pool. Um, as the agenda says, Building and Grounds Committee just approved to return that to the school board for our discussion and approval and so forth. So, we have, I don't know if everyone has seen it. Uh, but we do have, is this the only, the only quote? From Thatcher Pools and Spas to replace that huge sand filter at a total cost of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents. And it looks like. They would, uh, switch out some of that, uh. Valves and so forth along with it, which is, which looks like a good idea, that's all getting rusty as well. Um. What are they saying? It would take two days to take the old one out and one day to put the new one in. So, should be able to have it done in, in less than a week's time.
Mm-hmm.
So. According to this, and Thatcher Pools, uh, and Spas are the company that's been doing quite a bit of work for us at the pool, I understand, so. It's like L and M Boilers, they, they know us, they know what we have and so forth, so. Any questions about that? Anyone concerned about the need for that? Um, we all got a visual of that.
I'm guessing Thatcher's the only one around here that does that? Okay.
Yeah, the next closest one would be, I believe there's one in the cities and then there's another one in Sparta, Wisconsin.
Okay, I was guessing it'd be them or nobody.
Close to it, but.
And so, when they dispose, dispose of it, could, you think they'd take that old water heater out too?
Well, I would think that either they can or our people here can get it out.
Somebody needs.
It's not hooked up to anything.
Yeah, we might as well take it out when that's being taken out and get it out of there.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, I'm sure we could scrounge up a couple young.
And maybe there's some other things in there that need to come out, there's some other things that aren't being used.
The chemical system.
The chemical system and so forth.
But I mean, to dispose of that, I wonder if they would, you know, take it. I mean, there's, we can get other people to take it out of the building, but how do you dispose of something like that?
I think Nate.
Water heater.
I can check with Nate and I think he takes them at the scrapyard. Does he? I think so. You can probably just, just take it and throw it in the pileout back.
Okay, all right. I didn't know for sure, so.
But as far as removing the other items in there that aren't being used or whatever, you know, that's something that Jan and Aaron can work out with Thatcher Pools, you know, at the time that they're doing it, so.
Perfect.
We don't need to be concerned about those details, I, I don't think, just a matter of.
And then US Buildings and Grounds are going to visit, what to do about the water heaters?
That's still ongoing.
Okay.
Uh, there's been discussion at the committee level of, you know, can we use an on-demand hot water heater that would be more efficient? Does it have to be a hundred gallons that you would heat all the time? You know, it just, doesn't make sense, but we don't know everything either, we're not experts on that stuff either, so.
You're a good way to mend that on-demand possibility.
Now they put that, they put that backup heater in there and vented it right up through the old.
The old water heater was vented somehow.
Yeah.
So it should be a way.
Should be able to, but.
Should be a way.
Questions, I guess, we'll have to get answered.
So for right now, this is our, this is our priority?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and the other thing I thought of was with that being close to thirty-eight thousand, you know, we gotta watch our pool money. And I, I think Sarah made a good point where we keep our pool money using, you know, instead of drawing, I mean, because we're getting taxpayer money.
The pool is operated as a standalone type of an entity.
Right, right, right. Yep, yep.
I agree.
So we start, we're gonna start getting that almost in a negative fun balance if we do the sand filter and that water heater right now.
And keep in mind, Sarah and I, when we budgeted the pool dollars, we also were conservative in terms of our revenue stream.
Mm-hmm.
You know, people are just getting out of the COVID year, we're thinking they're coming back, but we didn't wanna go so extreme where, oh, everybody's back, it's normal again. I think it's just gonna take time, so we were pretty conservative there. So we should be fine, as Tim is saying, taking the thirty-eight out of the pool. For the pool, um, fil, uh, I'm sorry, the pool filter, and then anything else, you know, we may have to look at LTFM, because we can't go negative without.
Yeah, we can't really go with our water heater either.
No, no.
Be longer, so.
Nope, I agree, you can't. But your LTFM dollars are good, very solid numbers, so.
Yeah. Saw that tonight, so that's good. Any other questions, any other discussion on that? Otherwise, would someone like to make a motion to approve the purchase and replacement of a new, uh, sand filter for the pool?
I'll make the motion to approve Thatcher's Pools and Spas.
Okay. For thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents.
Yes, please.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks Deb. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Very good. Um. I guess then, uh, item F is a discussion of the pool water heater, I think that we're, we're kind of all, uh, under the understanding that we're not ready to do anything with that as a board yet, that's still, that's still being looked at and researched.
But soon.
But soon.
Can Bill think, we're all looking at two options, you know, like, if, how big a tank do we really need and what's that cost versus even if it's on demand? So as, as a board, we have something a little more to look at?
Yes, indeed.
How many showers are in each of those bathrooms?
Two.
Two in each bathroom.
And you have just the hot water at the sink. So it's not a huge deal. Okay, so, the discussion, uh, on the, on the water heater and stuff will be tabled to a later time. Okay. Um, moving on to reports. Uh, no student representative here tonight. Um, no staff report tonight. Uh, we're ready for the principal.
Um, not too much, there's obviously, we're wrapping up the school year and then already starting plans for next year, but some things we have going on right now, um, our new preschool teacher, um, she got a grant over eighty thousand dollars to have preschool this summer. Um, we have currently, I believe, twelve students attending that with a possibility up to seventeen. Um, and that money pays for transportation, food, tuition, um, teacher salary, stuff like that, so that's pretty cool. Uh, we got going on that, and summer reading program is up and running, um, here with a partnership with, um, the public library, uh, it's Tuesdays at ten AM. I'll mention kids or anybody, it's welcome to come to the summer reading program here as well, down here in the media center, I believe, that's where it's held at, Tuesday, is that right? Down here? So, uh, so those are two things going on right now that are, that kids can, uh, that we got going for the younger kids, so, other than that, more reports as the summer goes off, uh, August, you'll probably get more of a, uh, report on staffing and things like that. Um, handbooks, you'll get the first reading in July, second reading in August, all that, all the changes and this stuff coming, so, just a lot of things working on right now, but those two positive things going on right now for little kids, so. Questions?
And do we, have we had some applicants for the STEM position?
No.
How about for the student ad support advisor?
Um, that just was internal, we're talking about.
Too internal?
Yeah. And then, uh, PE, we're reposting. It's still posted, but we reposted with, um, potential additional, uh, FTEs type stuff and, um.
Signing boards.
Signing boards, so we set, reset that out, so. Other than that, um, yeah, those ones are waiting for me, I know, by the step.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Aaron? Okay, thanks Aaron. Superintendent report.
All right, well, I have a short report tonight, I don't have much for you. Couple calendar reminders are also on your agenda, but we do have EA negotiations, hopefully to wrap up, uh, July twelfth. Again, huge thank you to the committee and also the, the teacher representatives, it's moving along rather quickly and pretty smoothly. Uh, our next school board meeting will be July twentieth, so that kind of wraps up our summer and then boom, we hit August and we're all kind of busy with preparing for those last final moments until the kids come in. Uh, I'll be out the week of July fifth through ninth for a family vacation, so I won't be in the district at all nor, um, online. Uh, we did create a custodial summer activity or summer project calendar that we've set up for the whole district to see kind of where we're out throughout the building and grounds, so where, what, uh, floors we're waxing, you know, when the boiler will be going in, you know, things like that. So not only is everybody in the know and we're as transparent as we can be, but also for safety reasons, you know, so people know if, uh, they should stay out of the area where the boiler's going in or not to walk on, you know, wax surfaces, things like that. So we're trying to be as proactive as we can and the calendar, of course, evolves all the time. Uh, Aaron has been working diligently on our, uh, student handbook, our staff handbook, activities handbook, as well as all of our emergency handbooks that we hand out and are posted. So you guys will be seeing that in July and August, so first reading in July, second reading in August, as we've always done. Uh, on Monday night, you received an email from me, the board did, related to a memo we received from our MDE commissioner, Heather Mueller, related to the possible lapse between year and dates for school districts and dates that Congress is going to approve the financial budget for the year. Um, I'm not too worried about it, it's happened before, uh, in school years in the past, we continue, continue to do our business here locally. Um, we do have to sometimes tap into our normal cash flow to pay our bills and keep things going, but again, that money comes later. Um, so as soon as I sent that out at five-thirty to all of you last night, this afternoon at four o'clock. Um, so as soon as I sent that out at five-thirty to all of you last night, this afternoon at four o'clock, I did receive word that there is a potential agreed-to formula on the E twelve budget. And so, again, it's, it's just kind of leaked out there, so nothing is in the news per se, so I take this with a grain of salt and, and I hope you all do too. Um, but as I, as I said to, um, Patty tonight, that it sure is appreciated that they're really pushing for dollars to be put on our formula and they're looking at a two and a half to, uh, a two and a half on the first year, two on the second, which is huge for us without any unfunded mandates. Uh, many of you have heard us complain many, many years about that, and so we're finally maybe getting to that point where they're listening to us. Couple other things you'll note when the bill comes out is there is, um, um, the voluntary pre-K, that's gonna continue, it was to expire this upcoming year and that's gonna continue for another two years, so we're pretty excited about that. Special education cross subsidy, over ten million in a one-time special education dollar will be coming our way. English learners, four hundred million. Grow Your Own Teacher Development, that's been in the works for multiple years and finally they're really attached to it. About a hot, or about ten million will be going to that. And then our Teacher of Color Mentoring and Retention Grants, another, almost five million is going to that. And so, um, hopefully I'll get more information tomorrow, um, and once I do, the board will get, get it as soon as I get it, once I read through it and I'll hopefully highlight some key pieces there. Um, but I, I'm thinking they reached a deal which is incredibly wonderful, so that's a good sign, especially during this terrible year, frankly. Um, otherwise, that's it for me, thanks for being here tonight.
That's another reason why we need to maintain a minimum fund balance so that when we have those times when we're.
Yes.
Not getting our funding.
Right.
We still can operate.
We can operate, that's right.
Okay. Any questions for Jen? Otherwise, thank you. Um, are there any school board committee reports? She touched on the negotiations, so.
Um, I got an email from Dan for the SMEC update. Um, we will look at approving the SMEC budget at our June meeting. Uh, they were awarded nine thousand dollars in a ship grant to help the construction of the greenhouse. Unfortunately, this one's not good. Due to lack of water pressure, um, they will have to have a new well drilled. The good thing is, it's at no cost to the district, they have enough to fund it themselves. Um, SMEC Academy started with a hundred and twenty-five students in the June sessions, they've got really good numbers. And SMEC will also be completing the CTSS program, which will allow them to in-person serve the level three and level four kids for the next year. So we don't have to outsource the mental health, um, positions.
Thanks, Teresa. Anything else, any other board members have to report on? Otherwise, our next meeting will be July twentieth at six thirty PM. Is there a motion to adjourn and set that meeting date?
Make a motion to adjourn and accept the next meeting date of July twentieth.
Okay, thanks, Tim, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, meeting's adjourned.